Welcome Frankfurt and Franklin County residents, and thank you for tuning in to the Candidate Forum for Frankfurt City Commission General Election held on November 8th, 2022. I'm J.C. Young, and I'm honored to serve as the Chamber Government Affairs Committee and your moderator for this event. The obligations of a Frankfurt City Commissioner are multifaceted. In our form of municipal government in Frankfurt, our city commission is composed of four commissioners and the mayor. All legislative and executive authority is vested within the commission. The city commission establishes all appointive offices, promulgates codes, rules, and regulations necessary for the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Frankfurt. The commission provides sufficient revenue to operate the city and appropriates funds in its annual budget. The commission also creates the office for city manager and sets the qualifications for that office. In this Candidate Forum for Frankfurt City Commission, we're honored to have Ms. Catricia Waldrich, Mr. Kelly May, Mr. Kyle Thompson, Ms. Dawn Hale, Mr. J.C. Carstner, Ms. Lisa Unger, also candidate, was unable to join us for this forum. The office that you are seeking has a storied history in our state's capital city, and it's worthy of candidates such as yourselves. Before we begin, I'd like to thank and recognize the Frankfurt Area Chamber of Commerce for establishing this Candidate Forum and the Frankfurt Plant Board for hosting and broadcasting this event. Serving as our esteemed panelists and those doing the real work in this function are owner and attorney with Apollo Law and Frankfurt Area Chamber of Commerce Chairman, Mr. Jason Hart, Executive Director of the Kentucky Association of Master Contractors, Chamber Board Member, Chair of both the Education Committee and Frankfurt First Foundation, Ms. Lynn Faulkner, Chair of the Chamber Government Affairs Committee and Frankfurt Plant Board Communications Director, Ms. Kathy Lindsey. The questions that they will be asking came from a survey taken of Chamber members. Candidates will have two minutes for opening remarks, two minutes for closing remarks. You'll have one minute for responses to questions with 30-second follow-ups if asked by a panelist. You'll also have two opportunities to extend or rebut another candidate's response titled "Bonus Time." Please just signify to me you would like to use one of your two, and I'll grant that opportunity. Both of these bonus times will be one minute each. We had a draw prior to the forum, and opening remarks are going to begin with Mr. Carstner, and we're going to come this way. And Ms. Waldrich, you're next. Mr. Carstner, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Well, J.C., let me start by saying I've basically been as nervous as a cat in a room full of rocking chairs today in anticipation of this gathering, but I appreciate the comfort in which you made me feel in being here. I want to thank Chamber of Commerce and our panel, Frankfurt Plant Board, and all the candidates that are here with us. And I just want to say that, you know, in running for this seat, I would almost like to apologize for what would be, you know, an attempt to take the seat that you are in. I feel somewhat remorseful, but I know that's just the nature of government, and that's part of it. But I do sincerely respect what each of you have done and are doing. And with that being said, I would like to say that my desire and ultimately my registration to run for city commissioner was completely personal. I just wanted to be in public service for our city. One of the most rewarding periods of my life was when I was in the Navy, serving our country during Desert Storm, and it's a highlight of my life. And I would just, again, like to say, thank you for having me.
Thank you for your service. Ms. Waldrich, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for hosting and just really caring about hearing the issues from us directly forward. My name is Catricia Waldrich. For those that don't know, I am now serving in my second term as city commissioner and mayor pro temp. I am here running for reelection to be your city commissioner. I'm a mother of two wonderful boys, a 19-year-old and a 12-year-old who go to public schools, and one hopefully will be in college next spring, fingers crossed. And I work here in the community. I work as a paralegal right now. Before that, I worked at Kentucky State University. I also worked at the governor's office underneath of Dad Brashir in reconstructing the HR process for COT. Before that, I worked at University of Kentucky on EPSCOR Research Grant. And then before that, I also worked for Ernie Fletcher when he was governor in EPPC under Teresa Hill and Lloyd Crest there in EPPC. So a little bit about me, I enjoy being here in Frankfurt. It is a small community. For a single mom like myself, it is a small community that I can navigate easily to get back and forth with kids and still be involved in all that I can into the community. I'm running for reelection because I know it's important to have people that are your voice and who have your prioritizing your city as first and foremost. I feel I've done that in the last three and a half, almost four years I've been serving. I will continue to have your best interest at heart. I will continue to do what's best for the community. I will also keep in mind of our revenue stream flowing through right now going into 2024 and trying to make sure taxes stay low, but we also take care of our 4.1 deficit going into 2024. I'm here. I love the community. I love you. I love being a part of this community. I appreciate your vote again on November 8th.
Mr. May, two minutes, opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Appreciate you having us here, sir. Thank you to Frankfurt Plant Board and Frankfurt Area Chamber of Commerce for hosting us today. My name is Kelly May. I'm a lifelong resident of Frankfurt. I did spend a little bit of time after high school in Lexington where I joined the workforce and got the majority of my experience in hospitality management and working in the food and beverage industry, which I then brought back to Frankfurt and have had the pleasure of opening two establishments with several different business groups and have had an absolute blast seeing this community grow. The first project that we started was about seven years ago. Shortly after that, started a family here with my high school sweetheart, Brittany. We just welcomed a new daughter, three weeks old today. I have a daughter who will be five in November. We, of course, have roots here in this community and are very passionate about where it's headed. The decision to run for office the very first time was one being somebody born and raised here, like I said, and having the business entities and the family started. We wanted to see it grow. I knew what it could be. I could see that from the tourists that are coming through our community, those that have lived here and have chosen to call Frankfurt home. I believe our time is now. I hear that from our residents, and I'm very passionate about trying to make sure that we move forward together with everybody included. I'm proud to say that one of our first initiatives in my first term was getting our strategic plan in place, which, of course, encompasses four main goals, four main focuses, our idea values, the story of Frankfurt, telling the story of Frankfurt, focusing on our economic development, and the sustainability piece. We are aggressively working towards those goals. I look forward to the opportunity to continue to work towards them. I appreciate the opportunity, and I continue to ask for your vote on November 8th. Thank you very much.
Mr. Thompson, two minutes, opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Young. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you to the chamber for having this event. Thank you for all of you watching on television or recorded and watching. I greatly appreciate it. My name is Kyle Thompson. I've been a lifelong member of the community of Frankfurt, saved for seven years when I was in Lexington, receiving my undergraduate degree in political science, and the three years I was in Ohio, receiving my law degree. I immediately came back and brought my new bride, and we had our children. And now I have three biological children, which are amazing, who are 20. One that's 20, that's a junior at my alma mater, UK, and one that's 17, she's a senior at Franklin County High School, and one that is 11, and he's a sixth grader and knows more about rock music than I do, if you can believe it. And then I have two bonus children who I've been blessed to come into my life, one that's a sophomore at Franklin County and one that is a seventh grader. And of course, I'm married to a wonderful woman, Jennifer, who has been the absolute backbone and support of my life. I came back to Frankfurt because I wanted to be a part of my hometown. I love my hometown. I have always wanted to provide for my hometown, and I thought that I would be able to do that through my legal education experience as well as my business experience that goes back all the way to my childhood. I want to be able to use those efforts and that education and that training and that experience to be a member of the Board of Commissioners again and to provide for this community. The time is now because tomorrow is going to be too late for Frankfurt. Ask for your vote, and I thank you for your time.
Ms. Hale, two minutes, opening remarks.
I'd also like to thank everyone for having the forum today, the plant board, the chamber, Mr. Young. I'm Dawn Hale. Grew up here in Frankfurt, graduated from Frankfurt High, married our state journal paper boy. My sister had a big crush on him at the time. She wasn't there one day, and, you know, we had a little upheaval in my house for a while, but she got over it. Went to Kentucky State University, have a bachelor's in political science and economics and a master's in public administration. My daughter Laura graduated from Frankfurt High also, also worked here at the plant board for a while. She's an accountant in Lexington. I'm still working on getting her back to Frankfurt. Have worked for state government as a research analyst. I administered the Section 8 program at the Housing Authority and was the executive director of the Sunshine Center. I became involved in the community in the early 80s with the South Frankfurt Floodwall. John Sauer was the mayor then, had a meeting with the Corps of Engineers because the city finally qualified for the cost benefit ratio, and started the 10-year quest for the South Frankfurt Floodwall. Also, when Mickey Mills was the mayor, was the norma ray of neighborhood associations. I helped start the South Frankfurt Neighborhood Association and others throughout town. I'm running because I too really love this community. I want to see it grow and prosper. I don't want Frankfurt to be left behind. Right now, with our surrounding counties, we're not doing as well in growth, and so I really appreciate having this opportunity to run for office and to serve, and I too ask for your vote.
Thank you for your opening statements. We're going to have our first question. It's going to come from Mr. Hart in our order from drawn earlier. It's going to be directed to you, Mr. Carstner. You'll have one minute. Each candidate will have one minute to respond, and I'll call on the candidate for their response. Please pay attention to the timekeeper. Mr. Hart?
All right. What do you consider the most important policy the city commission needs to implement to ensure community reaches and maintains sustainability and inevitably ensures growth in this community?
I think, of course, support, development, renovation of communities, areas. I would like to see a civic council of some sort formed by civic leaders, you know, to be involved along with the commission in the aspects of what's planned and development and so forth. That, to me, that I just find that important, that, you know, that community input is a part of what the commission decides on, and that's weighed in the balance for any decision that could impact the city and the community.
Thank you. Ms. Waldrich, one minute to respond.
Yes, so I would say, I would say streamlining our processes for business developers to come into our community. I think a big stop that we have is a lot of red tape around our policies and things of that nature. I don't know if I could choose one, but I think streamlining, understanding what we present is the way that we present our policies would be that that's what we stay with. So when developers come to us, we're not changing them halfway through. We're not looking over things and continuing to move forward and making things difficult, but we're giving them upfront what our policies are from front to begin, let them know what they're doing, and we're also giving them the support to actually make it through this process and that we're giving them the tools and the resources to be successful here in Frankfurt and welcome them with open arms that we want them here in our community.
Mr. May, one minute.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. One specific policy is kind of difficult for me to answer, but I can say, you know, as far as a way of thinking, one of the priorities we have in our strategic plan is, piggybacking on Commissioner Waldrich's point, is streamlining our business friendly practices so that City Hall operates as a one-stop-shop for everybody coming in. If you have a question about a license, if you have a question about what is required on a property, a historic property, all of those questions can be answered in one specific location. I think it's important that we move forward with that idea that developers, investors, time is of the essence. Inflation can come back and get us in months right now and can delay a project or increase the price of a project. So I think it's incredibly important that as we move forward, that we make sure that we're doing everything we can to streamline our processes at City Hall.
Mr. Thompson, one minute.
Thank you very much. The first thing that we have to realize is that we are all citizens of Frankfurt, whether you are a Peaks Mill resident or you live in downtown Frankfurt, we're all Frankfortonians. As such, I think the policy that needs to be pushed most is the cooperation between city and county and state governments to work together to combine resources and having the same policies and procedures for all businesses and citizens, including but not limited to planning and zoning and code enforcement, and even combine those efforts. For example, waste management. If you are dealing with waste management for 27,000 people, you have a certain bargaining power. If you are managing waste management for 52,000 people, you have a different bargaining power. Same goes for recycling. We have the ability to do a lot more if we combine our resources and our assets and our brain power at both City Hall and at fiscal court, and I think we need to work together to make sure that happens.
Ms. Hale, one minute.
Do you mind reading it again? It's been a while.
Sure.
What do you consider the most important policy the city commission needs to implement to ensure the community reaches and maintains sustainability and inevitably spurs growth?
I think one of the most important things that the city needs to do is to look at the ordinances that are on the books. For instance, the subdivision regulations. You know, when's the last time they've been looked at? What are difficulties within the ordinances that make it more difficult for people to invest in this community? In looking at the subdivision regulations, for instance, there is so much that they have to do before they even know whether they've been approved or not for zoning purposes, for instance. Also, it is, we are one community, and we need to act like one community in our support and working with fiscal court and with developers. I think with KCDC, that's one of the main functions of KCDC is to be that one person to help grow this community.
Thank you very much. Our next question comes from Ms. Lynn Faulkner, and it's going to be addressed to you, Ms. Waldrich.
All right. Looking forward to the future and the changing workforce that can work remotely, what would you propose to replace the occupational tax?
Yeah, one minute.
Thank you. Thank you for that question. To be honest, I think definitely with state government, and we're speaking on state government because that has been a huge issue here in Frankfurt. We've lost so many millions of dollars due to occupational tax. With state government, I believe that with state government, that money should have stayed in our community. I think that the governor can make those moves with the legislators and the senators. I think that that should have been during COVID, that money should have stayed within the community where it belonged and not moving around to other communities, especially when this is your state government and we have over 22,000 people coming in. It was, when we were down and everyone else is down, it even took more away. And to me, I think that the governor and some of the legislators should have been more proactive instead of sending, when sending people home, to make sure that this is going to affect our community where they are. So I think number one, that to looking into to see what those regulations could be to start keeping that money here, because we also have to know that we can't keep depending on state government to continue moving forward. But I also think we need to be more livable places where people will want to come here and live.
Mr. May, one minute.
Thank you. It's part of the, kind of my whole approach and idea to economic development and what makes a great community, and it's having all of that, all the core pieces in place. So strengthening the workforce development to replace, to diversify our tax base is essential, but how do we do that? You know, we have to have critical infrastructure in place to inspire development, to bring jobs to the community, to replace the jobs that we have lost. I think it's, you know, we can look at it as one of two ways, where we've lost this revenue and it's never coming back, or Frankfurt has an opportunity to rebrand itself and decide where we want to go in the future. This is, this is the opportunity to do that. We don't have the choice. The reality is in front of us, and we have to think creatively. I can say a conversation that's on the table, certainly that we are all very aware of, the insurance premium tax, it's not something that, you know, was brought up from me specifically, but it is a conversation out there, and I look forward to having an opportunity to continue in that conversation as we move forward and trying to find creative solutions so that diversifying the tax base can be the way that we fix that problem.
Mr. Thompson, one minute.
To replace the occupational tax does not mean that you have to replace it with another tax. That is the long history of Frankfurt, tax and spend, tax and spend. And one of the things that I would never agree to is increasing the insurance premium tax on individuals, which would disproportionately affect those who are just trying to start out when it comes to starting family, owning their own home, buying their first car, things of that nature. But we need to combine our resources, like I said at the beginning, to lower our costs in general. We also need to consider the fact that we have the history of being the cradle of the modern bourbon industry here in Frankfurt. We have the most awarded bourbon manufacturer in the world here in Frankfurt, Kentucky, and we need to utilize that as they are our second-largest provider of jobs. Also, the payment in lieu, statutorily, was a paltry $177,000. That's what the state pays us for all of the space that they use in town. That needs to be upped, and it needs to be fixed immediately, and then eventually we can talk about bringing in new manufacturing jobs and things of that nature. Thank you.
Ms. Hale, one minute.
I wouldn't replace the occupational tax. I think it's the city's main form of revenue. I think if we grow our economy, then we're going to be adding new jobs and we'll be getting that occupational tax. I think we have the infrastructure here, the plant board, you know, we are a gigabyte city, so people can work remotely here, whether it's for the state or they move here and, you know, their company is located in Denver or something. So I think as we grow the community, if we grow our tax base, then we don't have to worry about replacing the occupational tax because we'll be getting occupational tax.
Mr. Carstner, one minute.
Yeah, I kind of agree with that. And, you know, being a business owner in the city, I know the difficulty in, you know, initial setup, outfitting, and the occupational tax. To me, in order to entice our, you know, new businesses, you know, maybe a tax break for new start business and so forth. Our other incentives to draw in would be businesses, whether retail or any other type of business.
Okay. Our next question comes from the incomparable Kathy Lindsey. It's going to be directed towards Mr. May.
Okay. I'm going to ask the question that everybody is asking, and so I shall pose it to you. After the history of the current commission in the past year, if elected, how will it be possible to work cohesively, and what will be your philosophy to work cohesively after something that some may consider so divisive?
Mr. May, one minute.
Thank you. I appreciate the question. My role is pretty simple. My role is to represent the people of this community as ethically and lawfully as possible. I take an oath. My job is simple, to uphold that oath, and I look forward to working with whoever this community feels like best represents them, period. You know, when I come in and sit down, I'm the city commissioner. My role is not to stop progress by bringing in personal issues or things that I may disagree with. So it's pretty simple. I can work with anyone in the room at any time to get a job done that the community wants done.
Mr. Thompson, one minute.
So I think that the elephant in the room is sitting square in the middle here, and I'll just, I'll just say this. I have, and I have continued to have a good relationship with nearly everyone on the city commission. The fact of the matter is that I provided a voice to a number of people in this community that feel like they've never had someone speak up for them. I was able to provide questions and answers and things of that nature and research that people were looking for. Unfortunately, the situation that occurred with the previous commission is one that cannot be untangled at this point, for some time, it seems. However, on day one, I am willing to work with anyone that there may be. That does not mean, however, that I will not continue to represent those voices out there that may feel that they are the minority voice, and I may be the lone no vote on a lot of things, including chickens and otherwise, but that I'm willing to work with everyone.
Ms. Hale, one minute.
Well, as a new kid on the block, I haven't had the past issues with the commission because I haven't been there, but my history shows that I can work with anyone. I've worked with neighborhood associations. I've worked with people at the Housing Authority and the Sunshine Center. I've worked here on the plant board, so I have a broad experience and base of working with people, and I think that's one of my strong points, is being able to reach consensus and work with a variety of people, and I will do it on the commission. When I was on the plant board, I represented the ratepayers. If I'm on the city commission or when I'm on the city commission, to be positive, I will represent the taxpayers and all of the taxpayers. So it's not a matter of trying to be buddy-buddies with the commission, it's just being able to work with each other, reach consensus, and get things done.
Mr. Carstner, one minute.
Well, I will say one thing about myself and personality is that I truly am a team player. I mean, I've been a role player on the basketball court, and I've been a logo on the total pole in a F-14 squadron. You know, I will present my ideas, thoughts. If, you know, if it meets with adversity from any other of the commission and it's not something that we pursue, then I can absorb that not coming to fruition. You know, I won't allow my ego to get in the way of our mission as a commission.
Ms. Waldrich, one minute.
Well, I'd have to say that I'm here to do one job and one job only, and that's to be the voice of the people and for my city and my community. That's what I'm here to do. As Commissioner May shared earlier, we took an oath, and in that oath, we have to stand on what our decisions are, and it's representing our community. I made the decision. My vote was there. I stand by my decision. I would not change my decision. I represent my community even when the going gets tough. This is not personal. I'm not here to be your best friend. I'm not here to make friendships. I'm here to make Frankfurt go forward. I love my community. I have made a lot of friendships and a lot of families in here, but when it comes to the business of this city, the business is what's first and the community is what's first in my oath that I've taken. So I stand by my decisions moving forward. I can work with anybody that will work with me moving forward that makes this city commission or anybody in the county. I have actually had conversations throughout this time with Mr. Thompson, as he said he was the elephant in the room, and I will he was the elephant in the room, and I will continue to do that. My first priority is the city, and that's where it stands.
Next question comes from Chairman Hart, and that's going to be made to Mr. Thompson. Mr. Thompson, you'll have one minute to respond to this question.
Okay.
Mr. Hart.
Frankfurt's a college town, we have Kentucky State here, but that hasn't been capitalized on by our community. Why do you think that is, and what steps would you propose to change that?
Thank you, Mr. Hart. First of all, I think it has been attempted many, many times to be capitalized upon. There have been a number of initiatives that have been taken over the last 40 years to attempt to incorporate not only the university as a whole, but also the students that come from all over the world to Kentucky State. I think that's a bit of a misconception. Those individuals are citizens here in Frankfurt, and many of them stay here after they graduate and obtain jobs. So I think that is there. I think what the difference is, is that there is a fundamental difference in opinion with regard to how to do business with regard to working together with Kentucky State University. A good example is when we were discussing using the Exum Center for pool use facilities, and we could not get on the same page, and then we ended up doing another study as the city. And I wish that we were able to have better communication, and it seems that we weren't able to do that. And I would hope that that's where we could begin, is with the administration.
Ms. Hale, one minute.
As a graduate of Kentucky State, I feel like I have a vested interest in how well Kentucky State functions in our community. I think it gives locals here the opportunity to get a college education that they wouldn't get anyplace else. I know that was the case for me. My daughter was two and a half years old when I started at Kentucky State, and I wouldn't have been able to go to UK or somewhere else to get my degree. So I think one way of increasing the link between Kentucky State and the community is for graduates of Kentucky State to be more active in the Frankfurt chapter of the Alumni Association. I think it is a two-way street, though. We have to, you know, the community has to work with KSU, but KSU also has to work with the community. And I think right now, they have a lot on their plate, so they need to be able to get their house in order, and then hopefully, we can sit down and plan a path forward for Kentucky State and the community to be more together.
Ms. Carstner, one minute.
You know, I'm a former student of KSU myself, not a graduate, but I personally, I've, been to numerous colleges. I started while in the military. And I can speak to the fact that it's a wonderful school. Professors I had were amazing. So I know it's a quality school. You know, as far, I really feel, yes, that there should be available channels open between the school and the city, ways to promote the school, you know, outside of our city, to other places in the states and beyond. So I'm hoping we work things out.
Ms. Waldridge, one minute.
Us not capitalizing. I feel that in a roundabout way, we actually do already capitalize off of Kentucky State by their students working in our community. Our students are living and renting out apartments. So I think in some ways, we do capitalize from Kentucky State. But I think some, and the most important way is partnership, is relationship and communication. I think if, when we go through bad things of ourself, we don't air bad things on Facebook. It's all that everyone's living this great life. Well, Kentucky State has been through some things that are embarrassing, that has been hand down over the years. And so when things like that happen, you withdraw. You know, you don't want no one to really know what's going on on the hill, right? And so I think we have to start that relationship. We have to start it with our local leadership, with our city commission. I think we are in the process of doing a good job, and how we go about that. We joined the Town Gown Association, International Association. We are working with Kentucky State presently. I am pushing that. The city commission has supported that initiative the whole entire way. But I think we have to continue to communicate. The turnover at the university has really put a strain on that relationship.
Mr. May, you have one minute.
Thank you very much. I think we need to look at it two ways. We can help the connection from the student population, and then from staff, faculty, and organization standpoint, we need to approach it in those two facets. I think, to answer your question as to why it hasn't happened, I think historically, we have to look at the brutal history of our community and go, okay, what was happening at the time of the foundation of historically black university and the atrocities that were also happening in our community? I think that's the elephant in the room in the conversation. We've progressed, we're coming along, and I think now, we're working on doing the right things. I'll give credit to previous commissions for getting the Thoroughbred Trail. I think connectivity was huge. As a physical separation, we now are able to invite students down in a safe way, including faculty, to get to our business district, to get to our historic district, to enjoy the many services that the community offers. I think partnering with the programs that Kentucky State offers and any opportunity as a city moving forward, we need to continue to do that, continue to work on it, and I look forward to continuing to work with our friends at Kentucky State University.
Next question comes from Ms. Lynn Faulkner. It's going to be directed to you, Ms. Hale, to begin, and you'll have one minute to respond.
If you could change one thing in our zoning code, what would that be and why?
I would change the ability to be able to rezone agriculture to industrial. I think we have to be able to grow our industrial base because that is where the good jobs are. And so now it seems that it is so difficult to get any zone changes. I think the comprehensive plan needs to be updated, most definitely. It's sort of hard to use the comprehensive plan as a guide when it was done in 2001. And, you know, things have changed since then. So I think that is one of the main things I would do, because we have to be able to have zone changes in order to grow both the economy and this community.
Mr. Carstner, you have one minute.
Yeah, as a real estate appraiser, a residential appraiser, I have a very good grasp on residential zoning. I don't, I'm not as involved with commercial zoning, I don't, with agricultural zoning, for instance. You know, I think that's a pretty broad zoning as far as what's permissible, what's its highest and best use. You know, I would think the difference between agricultural and commercial, I would like to see more detail in commercial zoning. There are more specifics in residential zoning than there are in commercial, I feel. So I would like to just see that broadened and more defined.
Ms. Waldridge, one minute.
One thing that I would change, I guess it would probably go back to one of our first questions that we had at the beginning, and that's just streamlining. I really feel, I've spoken out on this, I think there needs to be a one-stop shop, one location, one vision, one Frankfurt in Franklin County. And I think we put everyone in one place, we have one vision, we have one communication area, and then, you know, it just allows us to show that when people are coming in for zoning or wanting zoning changes and wanting to come into our community, we come together and show that we are welcoming, we are supportive, and we have all the resources and the tools for them to be successful, and we want them in Franklin County. So I think the main thing is being on one accord and welcoming these folks to our community and not giving them a hard time. And if we can do that with a one-stop shop, with zoning and planning, with the county and the city coming together, saying, we want you here, and here's one through 10 of what you have to do, and we're here also to support you every inch of the way. You don't have to make 10 phone calls. It's one stop, and you've got it done. Welcome to Frankfurt's community.
Mr. May, one minute.
Thank you. So I think, I certainly understand the basis of the question, most likely as far as what topics that we're talking about and what projects we're talking about, community interest here. I think it's important that when we talk about changing the zone, zoning laws and ordinances, that we do it with the mindset that there is a process in place that has to be followed. And I'm glad that we're going through some of the conversations in the community right now that we are regarding zoning and rezoning from industrial to ag and vice versa. I do agree, again, along with the streamlining process that we did speak about earlier, but I think some of that will shake out through the completion of the comprehensive plan. We'll have a better standpoint of where we're headed. I will wait to kind of hear the results of that process before talking about what I specifically would want to see changed. It's important that we kind of let that process follow out and let it get completed, but I'm very much in favor of anything we can do to expand our economy here. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, one minute.
I think Ms. Hale pointed something out very important, that the comprehensive plan was completed in 2001. It was never effectively put into place, it was never worked. This commission began the discussions of actually looking at the comprehensive plan and enacting some of those issues, and we realized it's antiquated. The process that we have right now is antiquated. Other communities do not have the same problem we do. They do not have subcommittee after subcommittee that issues can be passed down and kicked down the road for months upon months for a decision to be made. What needs to happen on the planning and zoning is we need to have a planning and zoning commission that's willing to make decisions. And the planning and zoning board needs to make decisions that are tough decisions. They need to spend time on them, they need to study them, and they need to make a decision, just like the Board of Commission does. We don't need nine months to determine if there's going to be a vote on chickens. We need to move forward when it comes to issues and making those decisions. We all are in the same area where we were at the beginning. Same goes for planning and zoning. We need to find out what those issues are, we need to address them, and we need to make decisions and be responsible and take responsibility for those decisions.
Our next question comes from Kathy Lindsey. It's going to be directed to you, Mr. Carstner. I would remind all candidates that we have one minute to respond to these questions. Please pay attention to the timekeeper, who I failed to introduce when we started, but I told, I told her I would do that, and that is the magnificent Suzie Hostly. So Kathy Lindsey to Mr. Carstner.
Great. What work have you done to improve diversity, equity, and inclusion in Frankfurt?
Well, like I said, I am principal broker with my own real estate firm. I'm a real estate appraiser as well, residential, not general, which would include commercial. I think my work as an appraiser has benefited the community. I take great pride in the fact that I have appraised homes that, you know, have allowed people to go through the process of homeownership. I really wish I had a count on the number of homes up in and in this community. So like I said, I take great pride in that.
Thank you. Ms. Waldridge, one minute.
With diversity, equity, and inclusion, first and foremost, I feel that I've pushed for a diversity position. It has not come to fruition quite yet, but I have pushed for that. I actually met with business leaders and people in the community, asking them what they wanted from a diversity position in the city. And so, and I have some of that information. We moved forward for that position, but we had to withdraw it because it lost the, it lost in, I guess, the workabout of the diversity part. I've also worked with, volunteered my time with the police chiefs in talking to them on issues and how we can make issues better in Frankfurt and how we can avoid issues that are happening in other cities. I've also volunteered my time that if they go to different places for recruitment, that I would go as an African-American minority to go with them to support. And I've also done the Town Gown incentives and working really closely with Kentucky State and bringing Kentucky State into our community and us to our community as well, and really pushed the naming of Thoroughbred Trail.
Mr. May, one minute.
Thank you. As commissioner, I have supported, not only vocally, but certainly through my voting record, cities' efforts, which we have done to conduct human resource-specific implicit bias training. We have coordinated with workforce development partners to help us be intentional when we are out recruiting to look for a diverse workforce. Specifically, in our partnership with National Renewable Energy Labs to help the community of the city reach its energy goals, we added additional funding to help us make sure that we ensure the transition is equitable for everybody so that we don't affect those communities where the energy burden is higher. And typically, when we make transitions into clean energy, a lot of times, we can see that be an unequitable transition because of the cost of the energy burden. So we have dedicated money specifically to that plan to make sure that that is part of our transition, and I'm very proud to have led that.
Mr. Thompson, one minute.
In 1958, the city of Frankfurt went out of its way to make sure that the crawl was destroyed and then used by the state of Kentucky to place their state office buildings there, and then they moved dozens and dozens of minority families into housing that has never been approved in the last 70 years. To say that the city has done everything they can to assist minorities and women is just a falsehood. We haven't, we have not done everything that we can do. With regard to all the things that I have done personally, I have, I own my own business, I have 20 employees, more than a majority of those are women and minority, and I'm very proud of that. But I also work with those who are disadvantaged and those who are struggling economically in cycles of poverty, and we try to, we work to get them out of, out of those situations. And so I feel very proud of that on a personal level. Thank you.
I'm going to end this question with you, Ms. Hale. You have one minute.
When I was at the Housing Authority and the Sunshine Center, I had a poster next to my desk that was a Goth quote that I'm probably not going to get exactly right, but it said, basically, "Treat people as they can and should be, and they will become as they can and should be." And that was a statement that I tried to live by. And so in working with my Section 8 clients and working with the clients at the Sunshine Center, I treated them with respect, and then they treated me with respect. And I think that's what we have to do as a city, as citizens, as elected, as an elected body. We treat others, the old, you know, treat others as you would like to be treated, the golden rule. And I think if we do that, then we'll have diversity and inclusion and equity in our city and community, and that's really what we want, to be the welcoming community that we are and can improve on.
Our next question comes from Mr. Hart. It's going to be directed to you, Ms. Waldridge.
Okay. What's more important in Frankfurt right now, given our development issues? Building new homes and commercial space or rehabbing what we already have?
One minute.
Thank you for that question. To be honest, I don't know if I could choose one or the other because both are very important right now, and both could thrive together. I think right now, when we look at our homes right now, we are very, we're lacking in that area. When we look at business fronts, we're lacking in that area of our downtown businesses. But when we bring in some new builds, we bring in new businesses and economic development that brings in new people, it brings in new opportunities for people to want to open up businesses in the smaller areas. With economic growth, to me, economic growth, when you're bringing in jobs and bringing in other homes, it brings in purpose of infield. Infield is an automatic for me. So I feel right now, we do need new homes, and that's why we are pushing the housing feasibility study to see what needs that our community needs in there, because right now, a lot of our homes and buildings are being turned into Airbnbs. So there's open space here in Frankfurt, but it's not livable space for us as residents. And so we have to tackle that issue. But right now, housing is an issue, and in order for us to want to bring in industry and things of that nature, housing is the front key because they're going to want their people to live somewhere.
Mr. May, one minute.
May you repeat the question, please? What's more important in Frankfurt right now? Building new homes and commercial space or rehabbing and expanding the existing properties? Okay. Thank you. Well, I'm really big on preservation. I don't think preservation should prevent progress, though. And I think specifically, you know, we shouldn't, I don't think we should be looking so much on, do we, do we build new or take care of what we have as, so far as finding what, what we need for the projects that we need? I think that's part of- I think that's part of identifying, you know, the directions we want to go. Certainly, we will know that we need more housing in this community. I think we all know that. But how we move forward and how we target actually getting builders interested in coming here is going to be very important. So in the meantime, we can't lose our identity and what makes us unique. That's one of the reasons that people come here and move here. And if you get rid of that, well, then we're just Anytown, USA. So, you know, certainly, what I'd rather, we have to make sure there's a place for people to live and set up shop here. But taking care of what makes us unique is the balance and one of the amazing things that Frankfurt has to offer.
Mr. Thompson, one minute.
Well, to be honest, Mr. Hart, either would be great. We don't have either right now, and that's the problem. We are the only community that has lost population size of the five surrounding counties with Shelby Scott, Woodford, and the other counties that we hold ourselves as benchmarks with. We really need to enforce the codes that we do have. We have a number of properties in this community that could be utilized as properties for affordable housing, things of that nature. One that comes to mind very easily is the old YMCA. You know, there is a slew of code issues there, but it's all through the entire city. And it goes to what Commissioner Waldridge says, which is, we need to enforce the codes when it comes to Airbnbs as well. We're losing out on almost $150,000 of annual taxes that we're not receiving because we're not enforcing that. Thank you.
Ms. Hale, one minute.
I think we need to work on both of them simultaneously. I think some things have to have new buildings because they don't fit in what's currently here. And so to bring new industry in, for instance, what are we going to do for infield for that? Because there aren't buildings big enough. I think for housing, code enforcement is really important as far as maintaining the housing stock that we have. When I was with the South Frankfurt Neighborhood Association, that was something that we battled all the time, was code enforcement. Getting a certificate of occupancy is on the books, but how many property owners are actually doing that to make sure that the property is up to code? So we definitely need more housing. We're falling behind on, as other communities. So I personally know somebody that moved here from out west. They ended up getting a place in Georgetown because they couldn't find a place to live here in Frankfurt.
Mr. Carstner, you have one minute.
Sure. Thank you. In the last three months, have probably done threefold amount of new construction, proposed construction or under construction appraisals compared to this time last year. And that really excites me. To me, as I mentioned earlier, renovation is very important. But new home construction, to me, is a major driving force in any economy. So if I had to choose between the two, it would be new homes, construction. I would, you know, like us to take in consideration our decreased population, do what we need to do there, infrastructure-wise and so forth, to draw people in.
Mr. Thompson, bonus time. Go ahead. One minute.
I haven't had an opportunity to use this yet, and I want to use it specifically for the purpose of kind of giving a shout-out to a couple of folks in this community that have really done a great job with taking the bull by the horns, if you will, to rehab buildings that really needed it. And that's Danny and Diane Strong. If we had more people like Danny and Diane Strong that were willing to invest in the community, the Taylor Marshals of the world and things of that nature, we would be in much better place with regard to where we stand right now with other communities. You need to have an active group of people who want to rehab and make your downtown and things of that nature better. What we're never going to have is we're never going to have a $50 million investment in affordable housing in downtown Frankfurt on BNC. That's not going to happen. That is a, that is a sales job that was told to us and is never going to happen. So we need to figure out how we're going to do it ourselves because we can't rely on people coming into our town and doing it for us. And people like Danny and Diane, I wish there were more of them here. Thanks.
Our next question comes from Ms. Faulkner. It's going to be directed to you, Mr. May, and you'll have one minute to respond.
The one-stop-shop for businesses has come up a couple of times. What would be the first steps to get this implemented? I know that there's a lot of issues with inspections and those types of slow-ups.
Sure. So the first steps, we've already taken them. The city manager and department heads are already meeting to start this process. It's ongoing. We haven't gotten the full report back and presented to the VOC, but as a part of the strategic plan, that being in there, we have the codes. The green means, you know, completed, yellow, ongoing, red, hasn't even started yet. We're in the yellow phase. It's ongoing. So what happens from there, you know, what we hope to hear from it is input from the department heads, what are some of the issues that developers or businesses are coming into City Hall, having the same issues over and over again? That, to me, kind of stands out as what we need to address. So the first step, ongoing, listening to the reality, to the people that, you know, the boots on the ground, working there, what are we hearing? What's the feedback? Taking that feedback back, working on it one step at a time, keeping the traction going, and holding ourselves accountable to getting it done.
Mr. Thompson, one minute.
Well, the easiest thing is to have, having one, planning and zoning code. And we need to, we need to not only do that, but also bring it up to date, and that just simply hasn't happened. It's antiquated. It takes too long to get things done. 15 years ago, it took me several months and several hundred dollars to get a two-by-two sign on my building. That's just ridiculous. It shouldn't take that long. We should have deadlines for our planning and zoning office. We should have deadlines for our planning and zoning commission to make decisions. We should enforce the codes that we do have in place so that we're already doing the things that are already on the books. That's the easiest thing. We don't have to change a lot. We just have to do what's already on the books. And if we're going to alter things, then let's just have one code. Let's have timeframes that everyone has to abide by, including the government. There's where your red tape comes in. People talk about, well, it's taken me forever to do this. It's taken forever because nobody's making a decision. And that's what we need to do. We need to hold people accountable, whether it's employees or committee members, to make those decisions.
Ms. Hale, one minute.
Yeah. I think we need to look at what is on the books, talk to investors and people that are investing in our community, and seeing what problems they're encountering to be able to change them. And I think we need to be able to not have more of a similarity between the ordinances between the city and county. Because if you're in the city, you have to have one set of rules. If you're in the county, you have another set of rules, and I think that makes it confusing for people to come here and want to invest in our community. So I think there are things that are in progress, but definitely we can work on. And also, we need to make sure we have balance in the people that are on the planning and zoning commission, people that are on the comprehensive plan committees, so there is not an imbalance of attitudes on those very important boards.
Mr. Carstner, one minute.
Yeah, I also totally agree. There should be more of a correlation between how the city, planning, zoning is structured and the county. I know in what I do, it kind of go, you know, you have to go in different directions to find out one thing and that sort of thing. So I basically kind of agree with what everyone has said, that, you know, streamline that, the process, and correlate those two.
Ms. Waldridge, one minute.
Do you mind to repeat the question? With everyone's answers, it's sort of, I want to make sure I heard the question correctly.
With the mention of the one-stop business that has been brought up, I wanted to know what the first step of the implementation would be for that, for the businesses, you know, with the code issues and the red tape issues.
The one-stop shop that we're talking--
For business, yes.
For the businesses, we're saying, we're putting the counties together and stuff. Oh, okay. I just wanted to make clearly. Thank you for that. I don't want to reiterate what Commissioner May said, but we are in the process of doing that. But also, in doing that is communication. We have to understand that our city and our county, we are here to bring in growth in our community, right? We're not here to compete with each other. We are here to make Frankfurt and Franklin County thrive, and we are a city that sits inside our county. And until we can get over ourselves sometimes to get this done, it's not going to get there. We're fighting with each other. And not only are we fighting with each other, we're fighting with each other on TV. It's aired on Facebook. And no one wants to come to a community that we can't even communicate within leaders. Everyone wants a pat on your back. There is not a better pat on your back than being successful and growing and thriving and giving people reasons to come and build and live here and put their business here. And if we can't get out of our own ways, we're going to fail. So we have to understand, we've got to come together. And I would like to see them in one building where they can communicate consistently, have a one-stop-shop, and continue moving forward where we are working together and not against each other. If we worked as much as we work against each other, honey, we would be in a better place.
Mr. Thompson, bonus time, one minute. Your last one.
I'm a little shocked that I'm the one who wants to talk in bonus time all the time. I would say, in addition to what I said originally, having one office, I agree completely with Commissioner Waldridge, I do not agree that this community is ready for any type of merger. What I believe this community is ready for is the combining of resources and the combining of offices. We're redundant in so many ways in this community. And it not only allows people to compete with themselves, but it allows people to decide, do I want to be in downtown? Do I want to be out in the county? What's best for me, determined on what is the easier route with regard to which group I'm going to work with? So let's have one office. Let's have somebody that's held accountable by not only the commission, but also the fiscal court, and has to answer to both of them. That's what I think we, when we start seeing progress, you can cut down a lot of that red tape if you start combining those resources. So thanks for the extra time.
Yes, sir. The Chairwoman of Government Affairs Committee for the Chamber has signified that she has one more question. This will be the last question for this City Commission Candidate Forum. It starts with Mr. Thompson. You'll have one minute to respond.
Okay, great. Through some of the answers today, it has come about, talking about making decisions and tough decisions. And in the positions that you're in or have been in, or even, you know, in a business, you're the decision-maker, and you have to make decisions. And a lot of times, they're tough decisions that maybe aren't going to be popular. So can you give me an example of a tough decision that you've had to make, and what was the impact of that decision?
I'll start out by saying, for me, it was whether I was going to run for office again. And that's a tough decision. My children have gone through a lot over the last year. My elderly parents have gone through a lot. It has affected their health. It has affected their, their way of life immediately after the pandemic. And I had to make that decision, and I didn't know how not only the individuals in this community would react, but also my family. Because it's difficult to be married or the kid of somebody who is on the front page of the paper every week is, you know, above murder headlines is, you know, Commissioner Thompson headline. So that was tough for me. It's not always worked out great. There's been a lot of tough talks, but I've been amazed by the support that people have provided to me. I'm thankful for that, and I hope that I'm able to lead them in the future.
Ms. Hale, one minute.
I think the toughest decision I had to make is when I was the director of the Sunshine Center. And the Sunshine Center has a very limited people working there. And the other full-time employee was a single mom, and she was not coming to work. She was not letting me know she wasn't going to be at work. And we could not function. The rules of the Sunshine Center were that two people had to be there in order to take clients. And so if she wasn't there, we couldn't see anybody. And yet she was a single mom. And I had to fire her. And it was not an easy thing to do because it was her livelihood. But sometimes you have to do what's best for the organization that you're involved with. And so I did fire her and was able to hire another full-time person that did a great job, and we were able to do what the Sunshine Center was there to do.
Mr. Carstner, one minute.
I suppose one tough decision I had to make was pretty recent, end of 2020. I was with a brokerage downtown. And, you know, 20 years as in real estate, I just, I'd never branched out completely on my own, being my own broker, having my own company. And I decided to branch out, open my own office. That was tough. And, you know, we go back to occupational tax and startup cost for new business. And so there again, I want to always encourage new business. And I am glad I made the decision. It was tough. It was a good place. We were good friends, so.
Ms. Waldridge, one minute.
I think one tough decision that I had to make in my life would be probably withdrawing from my adoptive parents in my situation. I was adopted at the age of four, and throughout that whole growing up, I was abused and beaten daily in a family that was not conducive to my health. Growing up, you always want a family and you always want a connection. And when I got into college, I realized that I was angry, I was aggressive, I lost myself and continued to, you know, not be a positive person at times. And I had to then go get a counselor to talk, to say, it's okay to let things go. And I had to love me more because I then became a mom. And for me to be the best mom that I had to, I had to let go of negativity. And that was what I thought was a family and of a structure moving forward. And so for me, that's a difficult decision because that's for me and my future. It also sets the future for my family. I would also say, you know, adding into that is where we always say that we have strongholds in our family that, man--
Yes.
I'd like, you know, that we have strongholds in our family that holds us back. You know, how we grew up, where we grew up, the socialism of where we grew up. Well, there comes a time in your life that you get to call the shots. And I got to call the shots to say, it ends with that family. It ends there, and I get to do better for my family. So yes, I grew up. I don't feel like I have much of a family, except for my Frankfurt here and family that has become family, and it's great to pick and choose. I love my brother and my sister that I got by that adoption, and my cousins. But there come a time where you had to disconnect yourself from negativity to be able to move forward and to get my children in a better spot. So I think personally, for me, that has made me the person I am today because I love everyone I come into contact with. I love this community. I never meet a stranger, and I'm always giving time for this community. And it just shows of what's important. And in this, in this society, in this city, I have learned that family is important, and we are a strong community. And I'm glad that I've landed here, and I hope that I'm giving back what I've learned from my past and moving forward, so.
Mr. May, one minute.
I think one of the toughest decisions I've ever made that directly correlates to this job is to, very early on, made the decision to try to take my own personal emotions out of every decision that I would make in this seat. And that doesn't mean that I don't have sympathy or empathy when it comes to making decisions, but I've realized very quickly, if I try to be a people pleaser like I do in my day-to-day life and the career of hospitality, that I will not be an effective leader. It's impossible to make everybody happy in the community. So we are fortunate to sit in this chair and sometimes have information that helps us make an informed decision that may go against what we, our own desires would be to see as far as how the community, you know, maybe a particular project, or a change, or an ordinance change, or a change to trash collection pickup and fees and how that works, but looking at what is best for the community. So that's been tough because I try to lead, I like to lead with my heart, but I have to lead with my head in this, in this chair. Thank you.
We've now come, time for closing remarks. Oh, yes. Go ahead.
I would also like to add, you know, in my professional life, hard decisions. I know I've served here for four years for you in the community, and I've made some pretty hard decisions, and I've been that lone no-vote. But I've given you my reasons and my-- But I've given you my reasons and my explanations for being that lone no vote. It's principle, it's integrity, it's transparency. And one no vote I remember making that was really hard was no against losing our city manager, Keith Parker. He was a huge asset for Frankfurt. And I feel that at that moment, I had to stand with my integrity. I had to stand with what I knew, that he was a great city manager, and I had to let the community know how the politics was working in this community. But I stood alone to prove that point, to make sure that we know that we're leading with integrity. And for me, I will continue to be transparent. I will continue to stand on my integrity for you and this community, even if I am the lone vote. And I will continue to support everyone that will work to the left and the right of me if elected back on this commission.
We're now with closing remarks. We started with you, Mr. Carstner, with opening. We're going to end with you. I'm going to ask Ms. Waldridge for her two-minute closing. This is closing remarks by candidates to the electorate, and I'm going to start with you, Ms. Waldridge. You have two minutes.
Sure. Thank you, guys, for having us again. I'm super excited to be here. I enjoy, though we're in a hot seat sometimes, I enjoy answering the questions, and I learn from everyone that's running here and puts us there and holds us accountable, so I appreciate that. But I've had the pleasure of serving for almost four years now. I put my name in the hat, not because I need a title, not, or anything of that nature. I feel like there's still work to be done. We only get two terms. We get two years here for a term, and it really allows you to understand what's going on in city government. So I am a little bit, I'm a step ahead of some of those that are running beside me. So I feel like I've gained the knowledge and the understanding to be able to move forward. I want to continue to be a part of this group that is moving this city forward. I will continue to be a voice. I know there are several candidates, maybe not on ours, that continue to say they're pro-growth. I don't think that I have to say that I'm pro-growth. My actions say that I'm pro-growth. I'm for growth in this community, for our children, for our children's children coming behind us. I'm for opportunities and quality of lifestyle for our community. I'm going to stay here with my integrity for you, for all of Frankfurt, for the business leaders here that I talk with, that I meet with, I go in their establishments. So I'm here for the community. I'm here for this relationship with Kentucky State University. It's time that we become one community. I think it's time that Frankfurt, the city of Frankfurt and the county start working together and have those meetings. But as far as this race is concerned, I hope that I have your vote on November 8th, and I hope I get to serve you for another two years so we can get some of these things checked off and some more green dots on our strategic plan.
Thank you. Mr. May, two minutes, closing statements.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Thank you again to Frankfurt Area Chamber of Commerce and Frankfurt Plant Board for hosting us and to the panelists, and we appreciate it. Frankfurt, I have really enjoyed my opportunity to learn and grow over the past almost two years, serving as your City Commissioner. I'm proud of the work that we've done. I'm enthusiastic about the work that we have to continue. If there's one thing that is motivating me to continue to run is I want to see some of those passion projects through, some projects that we were able to kick-start as a group. I really want to see them through, you know, certainly helping us reach our clean energy goals in the community and sustainability piece. I'm excited that through our work, again, you know, we had challenges in front of us that caused us to think creatively. And some of the things that I think that we were able to do is activating our downtown master plan, pieces of that, like the Broadway Bridge, for example. You know, we came in and said, you know, we've got to get that. That was identified. And sure enough, we got three and a half million dollars from the state allocated towards this, and I really appreciate the city and the state coming together to work on that. And I think that's part of the leadership that I bring to the table. Enthusiasm, focusing on what we can do, not what we can't do. We are unique, state, federal, city agencies working here, county agencies, we have to work together. And I see it. If anything, more than anything, I just want to keep going back to that. As somebody that lives here, works here, has helped start businesses here, I see all pieces of it. I understand all pieces of it, you know, what it's like to participate, not just as a consumer in Frankfurt, but as someone trying to help build that economy. It's been a humbling experience. I really look forward to the opportunity to continue to serve and appreciate the opportunity from the bottom of my heart. Thank you so much.
Mr. Thompson, closing remarks, two minutes.
First of all, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank Cable Ten for allowing us to have this. Thank you all for watching this. I need to go a little deeper, and I want to thank the citizens for previously electing me. I want to thank you for the innumerable phone calls, text messages, emails, letters that I've received over the last two years of encouragement. I want to thank my family and friends that have supported me unconditionally from the time that I was 15 days old and adopted, even until today. And I can never repay that to them. I have deeply enjoyed representing the city of Frankfurt. I never looked at any of the time and sacrifice as a burden, but I looked at it as a privilege because this is my hometown. And I came back to my hometown because I want to see my hometown thrive, not just survive. Right now, we're barely surviving. And what I want to do and the reason that I am running is because I want us to get over that barely surviving point and get to the point where we are generally thriving as a community. But to do that, we have to stop doing things the way we've done things for the last 40 years. We have to bring in new ideas. We have to look at the communities around us. When we say look outside the box, just simply look outside of the boundaries of our county. Shelby County with two $1 billion projects, with 3,000 home builds, that's one county over. And yet, we have only a dozen home builds in a year. And there's no reason that we can't be that community. We have all the resources, more resources than they do. But we have to embrace who we are, and we have to embrace what we're not right now. And that is, we are not a community that those corporations want to come to. So we have to figure out why that is, and we have to be honest with ourselves. And that includes our educational system, that includes our housing system, that includes our jobs, and that includes our infrastructure. All need to be fixed. I thank you for your time, and I ask you for your vote on November the 8th.
Ms. Hale, closing remarks, two minutes.
Yes, I also want to thank you all for the opportunity of having this forum. I think forums are really important, because I think it's important that the citizens know where each of us stand and what our vision is for this community. So I really do appreciate you all doing this. The focus of my campaign has been threefold: economic development, quality of life, and safe streets. We really didn't get into any of the policing or safety issues. And I had a really good conversation with Chief Bowman last week, and I was very disappointed to hear that the current full staffing is 63, but they only have 46 officers that are working right now. I think when we look at the budget and look at the deficit that the city is facing, we have to very wisely spend the taxpayers' money. And we need to look at things like community policing, for instance. I was the chairperson of the South Frankfurt Community Oriented Policing Advisory Board, and the South Frankfurt Cops program worked. It reduced the crime in South Frankfurt so much that the city was talking about moving it someplace else. Quality of life issues are important. I think if we want people to move to Frankfurt and for the community to grow, to bring those businesses here, we have to have things for families to do. And right now, we don't have as many things to do. What's been done at Dolly Graham Park is fantastic, but we need that indoor pool. We need the recreation here for families. Economic development is just basic. You know, we can't continue as we have been. We've been talking about diversifying our economic base from state government for 30 years, and it hasn't happened yet. The time is now. And I appreciate being here, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Carstner, you have two minutes, closing remarks.
Thank you. When I'm asked, why am I doing it? Why am I running? My first response is that it has to do with my dad, basically. He passed away a year ago in November, ironically. And in his passing, the outpour of support from the community, you know, he'd been minister for the majority of his life, and I had no idea how many people he had impacted and the effects it had on the people. And that outpouring just made it very idealistic for me to be in service, public service. Grant you a commissioner and a pastor, two totally different things, but to me, you know, it's still a service to the community, and that's my main reason that I'm here. I didn't decide to run because I was a disgruntled citizen, and there are things we can improve on, yes, but I want us to, see us just go forward from where we are. Recreation, to hearken your point, I think, especially, you know, I'm an East Side guy for the most part. You know, I miss the pool. I would really like to see us focus on that, that families, that brings things in, that just will improve matters a great deal. My only concern really is homelessness. We didn't get into that. I think it's something that needs to be addressed further, and maybe someday we'll get into that. But thank you all very much, very much. Thank you.
As we close, I would like to personally thank all of you for seeking this office. You've put your name on the ballot, spent your own time and money, skipped out on family events only to serve your community, and I want you to know that it's appreciated. You all have actually, you've done a really, really good job, a tremendous job in this forum, and I want to wish you all the best in this election. There have been some election law changes statewide in the last several years. There are multiple ways now to cast your ballot, few of which include mail-in absentee ballots, in-person, early voting before Election Day, and in-person Election Day voting on November 8th, 2022. If you don't know, or if you don't know how to vote or where to vote, please call the Franklin County Clerk's Office at 502-875-8702, or check out their website. It's loaded with current election information. Voting is a right in this country provided by our Constitution, and hopefully these election law changes will increase turnout. It's been an honor to serve as the moderator and emcee for this event. I'd like to thank all the folks that aren't on camera for all their work to make this possible, the Frankfurt Plant Board staff, the chamber staff. That concludes this forum. Thank you for joining us.